I apologize to everyone for having to conduct a meeting like this, but unfortunately, I can't run the risk of giving you all COVID. And I just was just tested today, so I don't even know if I've got it or not. So I'd rather be safe than sorry.
Try. Hope you get better.
Thank you. Okay, I've got five o'clock, so I'll call to hold this meeting to order with the Hartford City Council on January 28, 2021 at 5:00 Central Standard Time. I'll ask Brother David if he'll lead the group in an implication for our meeting tonight.
Yes. Bless our heads. Father God, we just want to give you the thanks. We asking you to touch this meeting, Lord, touch Brother George, our mayor, Lord, and touch the board members here, Lord. Bless us and touch our city, touch our country, Lord, and Lord just be a blessing to us, Lord. And, Lord, we asking you to move this COVID out of here, Lord, so we can get back to normal as you would say, fit in Jesus' mighty name. We pray. Amen.
Amen.
All right, we'll open the floor for visitors, and the first visitor I want to recognize is Dan Gray, who's our accountant, and ask that he make the presentation of our audit done for last fiscal year's records.
Good afternoon, Gray and company. This is Kristi.
Yes, Kristi, this is Lisa with the City of Hartford, and we are ready for our audit presentation.
Okay. Hold on just a moment. Let me transfer you.
This is Dan.
Can you hear me, Dan?
Yes, I hear you. Do you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
And we are ready for your presentation.
Well, you put me first thing in, didn't you?
Yes, we did.
Okay. All right, you should have two items, the small, simple, two-page one, it says, call it Sess 114 Report, and the purpose of it is we're required to give that to the governing body because we conduct the audit strictly day in and day out through management and through the staff. So this one, as you can see on page one, no difficulties encountered in performing the audit, no corrected or uncorrected statements, no disagreements with management. So we move on to the big one, which is the actual audit report. The opinion beginning on page one is a clean opinion. So the first presentation that you should have on that would be the statement of net position. Under this, the total net position, the bottom is $3,354,240 for the governmental activities, $5,409,82 for the business side, total of $8.7 million, which is essentially the net worth under that presentation. Page five is a statement of activities. Under that presentation, again, you see the same net position at the end of the year. And if you look for governmental activities, actually increased down near the bottom by City overall net position decreased by $453,177. That presentation for those two is on the business-like basis where the governmental side converts everything, your city hall building, all your police cars, fire equipment, is all converted to a business-like basis, which is the same as you would be doing for a private business. On page six, this balance sheet is a traditional one. This one is closer to what you would budget on. Total assets for the governmental funds is $2.3 million, the fund balance is $2 million. So then at the bottom, it reconciles it, and shows you how to get from the $2 million down to the $3,354,240, because you see this one books capital assets of almost $3 million. And then most of the rest of this, your case, has to do with those pension adjustments that we made at the end of the year. Page seven is revenues, expenditures, changes in fund balance for governmental funds. And this is the income statement under this presentation. A change in fund balance of $312,000 here in the year. So then when you see the reconciliation, then changing the net position of government activities, and this shows the differences in when you book capital outlays versus depreciation and the differences in pensions and so forth. Page nine breaks down the net position on proprietary funds for water, sewer, and sanitation. The segment revenues and expenses and changes in net position on page 10 also breaks that down. If you look at that going across, it actually lost $90,267, biggest part of that being the water fund, had a loss of $129,000, sewer fund $87,000, sanitation made $104,700. Page 11 is taking the cash flows. This is actual money in and money out, and you see that even with indicating that loss, cash overall increased for those funds, water, sewer, and sanitation, almost $64,000. Page 12 is taking the net position of fiduciary fund. Lots and lots of notes beginning on page 13. Real consideration probably on page 23 is the changes in fixed assets. And not a whole lot of additions during the year. Last year, of course, you weren't involved in any of those big projects like you had been in a couple of years before. The additions on the governmental, only $168,571, and there were some decreases for some items that were disposed. So the only reason then basically that the net decreased slightly overall is because of amount of depreciation that was claimed on it. Business-type activities, actually only bought about $145,000 of new assets, but then the appreciation was over $305,000. Bottom of that page breaks everything down between the functions. Destruction on page 24. Very, very little debt as far as the governmental activities are concerned. The only real debt, amounts very much, is on the water and sewer funds. No new debt at all. Everything was deleted. Total between the two, looks like about $165,000 of debt that was retired, and then you can see what the ending balance is and the amount that's due for next year. Page 25 shows what it takes to retire that debt. Then when you begin on page 26, middle of that is pension plans, and as you see over the last couple of years, it's very similar. You have page after page after page of explaining the pension plans, which is county employer retirement system and then the insurance fund. 33 is restricted assets, net position, and supplementary information on 35 is there's a budget, and you can see that the revenue is $271,000 more than the expenditure, slightly more, but overall, changes in fund balance. The city had $176,000 in net, favorable variance over the amount that was budgeted. Several more pages of pension information. Supplementary information here break down the three small funds, cemetery, LGEA, and the road fund. Page 43 is the income statement. The cemetery fund spent a fair amount of money here in the year without a whole lot of basic income, so there was money transferred in to keep it in flow. LGEA had almost $13,000 positive, and then the road fund collected, took in the normal amount of revenue for it, but just really didn't do a whole lot of projects during the year. Page 44, general fund expenditures, and they just breaks everything down, budget, government, police, fire, everything. Page 45 is the independent auditors report on, basically, this is the one where we put in findings, and there were no findings. Page 47 is a management letter, and the only discussed there is the place securities for all bank accounts. Do you have any questions? This was basically as clean opinion probably as we've ever done on this, and probably one of the cleanest opinions that we've ever done on any city anywhere.
Appreciate it.
Dan, I don't think anyone has any questions.
Okay. I will put a footnote in and say we do probably seven or eight cities, and I would have to say that seven or eight that we do, Lisa has the best grasp of basically why she does what she does, probably of any of them, because we have a lot of them where they essentially go through the motions, and, you know, at Hartford, if we have anything to discuss there, you know, Lisa knows what we're talking about, and if there's something that we see differently, you know, she's one of the few who can actually defend their position on it, so I thought I would like to throw that in.
Absolutely. Appreciate that. So does that need to become an emotion to accept that audit or anything to that?
It does. Mm-hmm. George?
Yes. Is there a motion to accept this audit report?
I think Bo just made it.
I'm making a motion to accept it.
All right. And second?
Second it.
All right. Any questions at all? Any discussion? In all in favor, uplifted hand, please.
All six is yes.
All right. Thank you. And thanks to Dan for bringing this audit to us this early in the year. We appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you all. Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
All right. Have a blessed evening. All right. Do we have any other visitors present who wish to speak, address the council?
Jeff Renfro is here for code enforcement.
All right.
Hey, good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council. First, I'd like to say congratulations if you were elected and re-elected. Looking forward to working with everyone. So I've been doing the code enforcement job for a year now. If you do want to read. Mayor, what I'm passing out, I'm passing out one of the red door hangers and with also the Excel spreadsheet of the violations that I went through this month for the month of January. So I put the red door hanger on there that way the new council members can see this is what, whenever I go out, this is the violations that I look for. If a property is in violation, I'll hang this, I'll fill it out, hang it on the door, and it gives the property owner or the resident a notice, and they usually have seven days to correct a violation. I go back in seven, usually said between seven and 10 days, I'll go back and check on the property, and then if it's not cleaned up, picked up, or hauled off, I'll work with Lisa, I'll fill out an official warning, and we'll mail that to them. And then that's kind of like the second notice there. But if you look on the spreadsheet there, these are the properties that I've went through for the month of January. There's like 20 on here. And so I got a few on there highlighted just to bring me your attention. These are the still ones for the month of January that, sorry, Tara.
You're fine.
These are the ones for the month of January that I'm still working on. And so one thing I did learn, I haven't learned, and Lisa helped me do this, you look at the property, you know, because a lot of times you'll go to a property and the people that live there is not actually the property owner, and so we kind of look at the property itself. But you see those ones, and I apologize for all my notes on the right-hand side getting copy on your guys' copy there, but like the first one there on highlighted, 1215 Johnson Street. So I did talk to Ms. Decker there, and I did go by and double-check. They had some vehicles out there that they were working on. She said her son works on vehicles there, but they moved the vehicles, but they still have a lot of cleanup to do. So that one's continuing. I don't think, I'll keep an eye on that and make sure if I need to send another warning, I will, but they are making progress. The next one down to 1208 Johnson Street, which is right on the street from it, there's no change there, and so we mailed them a warning on the 26th, January. Lisa mailed that out for us. The next one that still interests is the White Avenue address. They have like a 1986 Blazer sitting out there with flat tires and stuff like that. No change, and that is a rental property, so I will be mailing out a notice to the, well, I think we already did, the 26th, we mailed out one to the homeowner. Kirk Street Moak Home Park, new owner here. The place is always, it's just trashed everywhere. I have talked to the residents. They claim that it was left over from the previous tenants, and anyway, Mr. Diaz there is the new owner. I did go by there. He has been cleaning up. He said that he was ordering a big dumpster, and he's going to be remodeling and cleaning up a lot of trash there. So that's still cleanup in progress. He has been cleaning up. And then that bottom one down here on East Union Street, I did check with them yesterday. They are making progress there, and they also had a problem with a barking dog there, and when I've talked to them, it is getting better there. But this is the month of January. I don't know if you guys can see my number down there in the lower left-hand corner. It didn't print out very big, but if you guys come across anybody needs help or want me to go out and look at anywhere, I don't mind to go look. I don't have a problem at all. And that's all I got. If you may have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Mayor, I've got one question.
All right. Go ahead.
Do we still own, do we still own bins that were on code enforcement? Do we still own where the recycling building was?
Yes, we do.
What would it take to clean that up right there in itself?
Well, we've had some people that have been trying to salvage the metal out of it, but all we need to do, I think, is to start hauling it off to the landfill or down to the lagoons. Unfortunately, right now, it seems like we're just hurting for time to get it done, you know?
I understand. I just, I feel like if we're going to enforce it, I think we should hold ourselves accountable on such stuff like that being seen on our properties.
Sure. I understand. I'll talk with Jason about it, see what his thoughts are on it, because we do have quite a bit stored down there, and, you know, it is visible to the public, and it does create an eyesore.
So that's all I've got. I just, that's something I had on my mind there.
Sure. Appreciate it. Anybody else? Any other visitors?
No, that's all.
All right. We'll take a look at the minutes of our last meeting, and as soon as you have a chance to look those over, I'll entertain a motion to accept those or make changes.
Make the motion.
Bo makes the motion.
All right. Second?
David?
All right. Any discussion? All in favor of accepting those minutes, uplifted hand?
All yes.
All right. Thank you. Tara, if you got anything for us tonight?
Nothing outside of what we discussed previously.
All right. Take a look at the financials, and let's see if there are any questions about those once you've had a chance to, hopefully you'll take a look at those before you come to the meeting, so that if you have questions, we can get right into them. And, but I'll entertain a motion when you feel comfortable to accept those financial reports.
Mayor Bill made a motion.
I'll second.
Stay sure.
All right. Any discussion about any item? If there is none, then we'll proceed to vote. If you're in favor of accepting those financial reports, uplifted hand?
All yes.
All right. Thank you. The floor is now open for old business. The only old business we had left over from the last meeting was the discussion about replacing the roof on the priest house. I don't know if the, if the station Bo know about it, but the city owns the house up behind the water plant, and the occupant right now is Josh Ashford, who's one of our water plant operators, and he has come to me and said that there are leaks developing in the roof, and so it's been a while since the roof has been addressed. So I got two beds on a metal roof, but the last council wanted to know about shingles as well. So what we have now is an offer from Ralph Porter, and if you have other people that you want to involve, you know, we'll go through it, but Ralph has given us an estimate on replacing the shingles and putting new shingles on. Of course, there's going to be some sheeting replaced, but new shingles or putting a metal roof on or putting a better metal roof with a standing seam on it. And so we've got those three estimates, and Lisa has those right now, and she can present those to you, and then the floor bill for a motion and then discussion.
We are passing it currently, so the council members can see it.
Okay. That's fine.
Jerry, you want to just read it out loud?
Said remove shingles and install 25-year shingles and dormer side siding and flashing to replace, and the materials and labor is $7,775,000.
$7,775?
It's got...
$7,700.
$7,775. And...
That's for the metal?
That's for shingle.
Shingles.
Shingles, okay.
And 36-inch metal with tarp, heavy tarp paper is $9,510. Standing seam metal is $12,480.
What, what is that?
A standing seam in it.
It's a more decorative type metal that's got the stand-up edge, that has the screws of sorts.
Right. But it's the highest at $12,460.
I will, I will report to you that in discussing this with Ralph, he says, for that roof, that particular roof, the way it's cut up, it would be much easier to put the shingles back on it. There is a flat roof back there that we'll have to put some kind of sealer over it, but Ralph recommended putting the 25-year shingles on it.
Has it been appraised for any hail damage or anything?
The entire roof would be guaranteed for 25 years or just the shingles?
Well, the shingles have a life expectancy of 25 years. I don't know that they're guaranteed for 25. The metal would be, would have a life expectancy of about 40 years, but the roof has, has a lot of, it had to be cut. It's not just a simple operation to put that metal on.
Stacia?
I had, I had asked, has it been appraised for any hail damage? And the reason I ask that, we had our roof replaced, and a large portion of it, we didn't even know we had hail damage, and it was paid for through our insurance company.
It's not been appraised yet. We can have that, but...
Old hail damage didn't pay for it.
Hey, Mayor, I talked to Josh today, and he said that he's, I guess he's got his, you might correct me if I'm wrong, but he's got his carpet ripped up and everything right now from, from the water coming in.
Right. It's, it's, it's worse.
I'll, I'll make the motion to accept, but with that emotion, I'd like to see if we can get a home inspection done on a house itself, because I'm afraid with due time, this is going to be a liability issue. You know, I've seen some of the, it looks like it shifted on one side there, so I'd like to put, entertain that in a motion to get it inspected for the precautionary of the, for the city liability.
What, which option are you making a motion for?
Making a motion for the...
Shingles or the metal?
Metal.
Which one?
The metal.
Regular standing seam?
Regular.
36-inch metal?
Yep.
Is there a second?
I will second that for the metal roof.
Mary Bill seconds the metal.
Okay. Any discussion?
That's the $9,000, correct?
Yes.
David was asking.
On the metal, do they tear the shingles off or just put metal over them?
They'll have to replace the board under the shingles, so they'll have to tear the shingles off of it.
Yeah, because they'll have some sheeting that'll need to be replaced.
So it'll all have to come off to do that.
One price $9,510. That includes everything on that, replacing the sheeting on it.
Right. You will have to replace all the sheeting just where it's been leaking.
What happens if they find more problems than that?
The price will have to go up, but you don't know what you got to get underneath it.
I know, but we need to get that thing fixed if we've got somebody living upstairs, especially an employee.
Yes. Yep. I agree.
I don't care for the metal roof.
You don't like it? It's got a longer life than shingles most of the time.
Yeah.
Here, have a leak on a metal roof, it's almost impossible to find the leak. Everybody's own thing, you know?
Yeah.
That's right. I just worry about what they may find under that, under the plywood they're going to have to replace.
And leaking bad, they have to replace a bunch.
Yeah, and we put it off for a month.
Could have a moldish.
Yeah, it needs to be done now.
Yeah, it needs to be done immediately.
Yeah, it needs to be done immediately.
Well, uh, Mayor, can we entertain, if it's got nine on it, can we put another thousand add on it for board? Can we do that?
Oh, for the sheeting?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, we can, or we just.
And if it don't get used, it goes back into the.
Do what?
Can you repeat that?
I mean, we can stand ourselves to supply it to them.
Okay, okay.
All right.
So you got a motion on the, you got a motion for the.
Right.
Ninety-five hundred for the metal plus a thousand for sheeting.
Wait, are, are, are you?
Are you amending your motion for the thousand for sheeting or are you?
Well, if, if we can purchase it ourselves.
Yeah, well.
Listen, there's very many pieces of plywood that's going to need to be replaced up there.
Well, let's just.
You know, I'd say three or four pieces, but probably is all we're going to have to replace. I don't think it's that bad.
Let's just hope there are no raptors.
Yeah.
So you are not amending?
Um, no, I'm not.
So you, we have a.
Okay, any more discussion? Okay, if not, then we'll proceed to vote. Uh, if you're in favor of the, uh, replacing the roof on the priest home with the cheaper, uh, metal, uh, signify by the uplifted hand?
We have, uh, five yes.
Okay, and if you're opposed, uh, uplifted hand?
We have one no.
Okay, so the motion does carry. All right, um, that's all the old business we have, so we'll go on to our new business. Um, we have a resolution here regarding the, the comprehensive plan for the, uh, planning and zoning. And it's the next and last page in your packet. All right, um, if somebody will, uh, just read the, uh, the title, description of it, and then we'll entertain a motion to adopt it or not.
Resolution twenty-two-one dash zero one. Adoption of the twenty-two-one Ohio County Comprehensive Plan Update. A compilation of policy statements, goals, standards, and maps regarding the overall development and redevelopment of the local governance unit.
All right, then I'll entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Mary Bill made it.
All right, second?
I'll second it.
Jerry?
All right, anybody have any questions about this?
Yes, are we going to get copies of this comprehensive plan?
I'll get, I'll get an email to Lisa that she can send out to everyone. I'll get an email to Lisa that has it, she can send it out to everyone. It's, it's pretty involved, so.
They don't make copies for the.
Well, nobody has really met in person in a while due to COVID, so we've been doing majority of everything via email. So you got a.
The comprehensive plan, if the planning and zoning has an updated one, especially as detailed as this one is, a lot of businesses would look more favorably toward, uh, Hartford and Beaver Dam, uh, locating a business here, uh, than, uh, what we had in the past. This is quite a bit more extensive and, uh, much greater detail, uh, about the comprehensive, uh, plan. It's just a guide for what we'd like to see in the future is basically all we have. And, um, we've, we've had this with the help of, uh, with Grant to develop this over several months. And I think we still have one more meeting, don't we, to meet?
After, after all, both cities adopt the resolution, then we'll come back together and finalize everything, yes.
Right. Any more discussion regarding this resolution? If not, then we'll vote on it. If you're in favor of accepting, adopting this resolution, uh, signify by the uplifted hand?
Oh, yes.
All right, thank you. Um, the code enforcement member, I've not, I've not been in the office, so I haven't done anything regarding, uh, finding a replacement for our code enforcement, uh, board. I will accept any kind of suggestions anybody has at any time, we welcome them. So, uh, but we, we are lacking one code enforcement member on our board. Um, I have, uh, two other things to bring up.
Uh, George, George, George. Uh, if you remember, we called and spoke with Janet Coulter and she was willing to continue onto the, on the board.
Right.
If you want to.
But I think we're missing Robbie, aren't we? We're going to replace him?
Cabbage is the one that we need to replace.
Yeah, probably Cabbage.
But if you, but if you want to add Janet Coulter, you could do that tonight.
All right, uh, then we, we can go ahead and do that while it's fresh on our minds, all right? If you're in favor of adding Janet Coulter or keeping her on the code enforcement board as a, uh, member of that board, uh, would you, uh, signify by the uplifted hand?
Do we want to?
We need.
Yeah, we, we need to have somebody do the first and second on a motion there, George.
Right, right, okay.
David made the motion for first.
Second.
Tony on second.
All right, thank you. Uh, discussion? If there is none, then if you're in favor of Janet Coulter, uh, reigning on the code enforcement board, uh, signify by the uplifted hand?
Oh, yes.
Okay, thank you, my fault. Um, we've got a situation with our water billing. And Sarah asked me to, to bring to you, uh, our dilemma, I'll say dilemma, um, and look for suggestions or recommendations or, uh, picking it the way it is. What happens is like, uh, we have months where the tenth, which is our final day for receiving, uh, the base pay, uh, base bill. The tenth falls on a weekend. Now, uh, we've got a, a drop box for people to deposit their payments in over the weekend. Uh, but what happens is people, our people think that we end up with, uh, the tenth being on a weekend, they get the eleventh to bring in their, their bill. Of course, uh, our ordinance says on the eleventh is the day late. And another issue that we have is with people who, um, make payments. Well, for example, we had a, a lady make a payment and it was like a hundred and fifty-some odd dollars and twenty-eight cents. Well, she made the checkout for a hundred and fifty-some odd dollars and twenty-three cents. You know, she, it was just, uh, mental lapse, we've all done it. And for that nickel, then she becomes a delinquent and they're, I mean, our computers, you know, it's in the program that if you come up two cents shy, then you have the penalty, uh, put on it. Well, her penalty was going to be over fifteen dollars. You know, it's just ten percent of what the bill is, you know, for five cents, that was an honest mistake on her part. And Sarah was wondering, you know, we have, this happened, people write out their check for the wrong amount and it's never over, I'll say that, it's always under. But, uh, you know, she's wondering if, maybe if it's less than a dollar or two dollars, something like that, that we could just go ahead and add that on to next month's bill and not charge them, uh, you know, an amount fifteen dollars for a five-cent mistake, you know? So there's, uh, a couple of things that, that she's wondering about. Now Sarah's very good, she, she's, um, she's, it's black and white with her, you know, she goes by the ordinance. And, um, she, but she does go ahead and call people if they're, you know, if they're going to be late or something like that, or if they made a payment that wasn't accurate, uh, she'll call them and give them a chance to, you know, come in and make it right. But, uh, but we've got some people that'll make a checkout for seven dollars less than what it's supposed to be. So it's just a dilemma we could, it seems like sometimes we can win a battle, but end up losing the war, you know what I mean? It just seems like it, um, I don't know, y'all, I need some help on this, uh, so what, what you all feel about this. Uh, first of all, about the tenth, it's going to fall two more times this year, the tenth is going to fall on a weekend. And, you know, there's a means for them to pay by the tenth. Uh, do we still want to keep it the tenth as a deadline or do we want to allow them an extra day if the tenth is on a weekend? And also what about, you know, payments that are just a little bit light, you know, si- uh, a dollar light or seven cents light or something like that? Do we go ahead and charge them the full penalty or, you know, that's what the ordinance says? But it seems like that, uh, you know, we, uh, I'd like to think that we're a little more compassionate than, um, than, you know, doing everything black and white. Uh, we've tried to do everything since I've been in office according exactly what the ordinance says. That way we don't have to apologize to anybody, we don't have any favoritism going on or anything like that. And it's, but we still have those, those situations where just, you know, we can hold tight to the ordinance and still, it's kind of almost bad PR, you know what I mean? So I'm hoping for any kind of discussion that you've got about this.
I'd say give them a dollar leeway.
Yeah, I think we should give them a little leeway.
Give them a dollar leeway, it'd be able to pay fifteen dollars over a nickel.
Yeah.
And if it falls.
They're a good bear to put that nickel in, you know?
I, I think Sarah should be giving the leeway to.
Yeah.
Over a cent or small.
I think if it falls.
It goes over a dollar though, no?
Yeah.
If it falls on a weekend, give them to that next Monday. If it, the tenth is on the weekend, can we?
It happens two more times this year.
But then they come in the next month and say, well, you let me pay it on the eleventh on the last month, so what's the difference?
There's a drop box.
That's, yeah.
And now you can do online payment, uh, with credit card.
Okay, makes sense.
I think you could probably delete the, 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 the dollar leeway that you're talking about, that could be adopted as a policy for the city. If you were to change the due date situation, I think we'd have to amend our ordinance.
Okay.
So there's some, there's some consideration.
Just about everybody though would go, but if it falls on the weekend, you got the Monday to pay, send your taxes in or whatever.
Well, they've already had their bill almost two weeks. You know, it's, it's not like, uh, you just got the bill and you rush to pay it. You, the bill comes out shortly after the twenty-fifth of the month. Uh, I got my bill today for this past month and, uh, you know, I've, you got almost two weeks to pay it. And then after that, uh, with the penalty, we've got, you know, another fifteen days on top of that that we give them, you know, to pay with the penalty before we shut off the water. Uh, it's much easier to deal with people, you know, if we go by the black and white. But like I said, you know, if you've got those little minor mistakes that somebody makes, surely we can be a little more forgiving for that than, than, um.
George, I think it's.
Yes.
But I think it's only fair that the council understands from Sarah's processing standpoint that when she applies those late fees, it's like a click of a button. So if my check was off five cents, literally she will have to go through eleven hundred accounts to see if any of them were off five cents because it isn't, it's, it's just automated. But I mean, I'm not saying here nor there, I just want you to understand how that system works. It's not like that she is, oh, well, they're five cents short, therefore they're automatically getting it. It's not that way. The system looks merely at every account and it's instantaneous when she clicks the button. So she will manually have to go back and manhandle that to catch anyone that is off whatever dollar amount you decide.
Well, it doesn't happen very often. I mean, it's not like it's, uh, two dozen people every month having that problem, you know? It's just, uh, one or two usually is about all the problem we have with that, but, um.
George, if I can make a suggestion, if, if the council wants to adopt a policy, we can make it a, a formal written policy. But if someone were to inquire about a penalty being assessed and it turned out to be just a one or two dollar short, um, underpayment, at that point, maybe they could request that it be waived, um, and, and put a limit on how many times that could happen within a year perhaps. And that way it's something that if the customer brings that up, that way Sarah's not having to go through eleven hundred accounts and only catch one or two possibly. That might be a better solution.
Well, she gets a printout of the ones that are, you know, um, that are, that are deficient, you know, that didn't make the full payment. She gets a printout of that, so it's not like she has to check all eleven hundred of them. But, uh, sometimes that list, uh, can be long, you know, with people seven dollars, ten dollars, not paying at all, whatever. So, uh, yeah, I mean, I'm in full, uh, acceptance of you coming up with some kind of, uh, policy that we can look at next month.
Well, I, I say that you make it no more than a dollar that it's short. And that, that you explain to the customer and tell them, we're trying to relinquish it, but we can only do this so much.
Sure, I think you can put that in that policy and does the dollar seem to be the agreeable limit for all?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Tara, why don't you work on that for next, for our next meeting and then we can, uh, I don't think we have the, uh, the tenth on the weekend. So you're, um, I'm hearing, what, what I'm hearing you say is that go ahead and, and, uh, let the tenth still be the deadline. And if they haven't paid, you know, by the tenth, then they, they'll have the penalty on the eleventh, even if the tenth comes on a weekend. Is that what I'm hearing you say?
Could, could we possibly, if it only happens twice this year, could we possibly put the little statement on the back of the statement saying, you know, like you do on trash days, you know, or holidays that the offices close? Could you state your due, your due date is the tenth, it falls on a weekend, please make accommodations to get this paid?
And you can pay online, I think, starting Monday too, right? So that'll be, that'll be.
Therefore, there's no excuses if it's in writing and they've seen it.
But I guess my question would be.
I don't think you ought to change your date.
Right.
I mean, it's on the bill now, it's the tenth.
But I guess my question would be, what if you have repeat?
Fingers.
Repeaters doing this, where's the cutoff at?
Yeah. Went back to the money, the same.
Yeah.
That's why I was wondering if in this policy you want to adopt that you want to say how many waivers you can do.
I feel like you need to put a, a deadline on that, you know, if you get one or two, you.
Think we do like, what do we do, allow for one or two sewer adjustments a year?
One.
One?
And like, and like she just had, uh, a return check and this individual, this is the third one. And what they do, they write the, go ahead and write the check to get the water turned back on for the twenty-fifth. And then, and then I check the bank and it bounces.
When somebody short pays you your water bill, you're not losing that money because it's added on to the next month.
Right.
Right.
So we're not, the city's not really losing any money, you're just not getting it right that day.
I think the question what Bo is saying is every month, are they doing that to where they're carrying?
Same person may do it.
Yeah, so are you going to allow them to do it twelve times, allow them to do the adjustment twelve times throughout the year or just one or two times or?
Just a couple of times.
Yeah, okay.
Twice at the most.
Okay, I'll put that in the policy.
When you say an adjustment, are you talking about like if they have a water leak or something like that?
No, like if, if, if the penalty were be, to be assessed because they're a dollar or so short, then the adjustment would be to remove that penalty, but no more than twice a year for that type of occurrence.
Right, that sounds fine with me.
Y'all cover that?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Need a mo, motion on that?
Um, I think it would probably be formally adopted when we get the policy written and we'll present it to the council for approval.
Yeah. All right, just, uh, I've got one other thing. I want to, uh, nominate, uh, Stacia Cole and Mary Bell Fisher to serve on the EDC as representatives from the council for this coming year.
Is there a motion?
So I would need a motion to, uh, well, I don't know. Tara, do you think I need a motion for that or can I just, uh...
Go ahead and do a motion, that way it can be in the minutes and we'll have it that way, George. I don't have that, I don't have that order in front of me.
I'll make one.
Tony, first?
I'll second.
Jerry, second.
All right, all in favor?
It's all, uh, all.
Yeah, everyone.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Do you want to go ahead and, George?
Now, there's one other thing. You've got a little piece of paper, uh, that says officer and employee ethics. Uh, we have, uh, fill out this ethics form once a year and just, uh, it's just a general form about what kind of a business do you have, uh, you know, uh, and basically, I mean, that's about it. Do you owe anybody anything and, uh, if so, who and...
Be a little person like you do.
So that we know, you know, that you're not going to be influenced by, excuse me, by, uh, somebody owing you money or you owing somebody else money or whatever. So, uh, we fill this out once a year, we keep it here in the office. It's, uh, it's not anything really important, killing important. It's just, uh, it's about our ethics and, uh, we try to be ethical members of, of the Hartford City Council and Mayor. So just fill that out sometime and drop it by the office and Lisa will kick forward of it. And, um, that's all I've got. Does anybody else have anything that you want to bring up tonight?
David does.
Yes, I do. Uh, it had been brought to my attention on Kirk Street. It's kind of dark down through there and we need some lights down on Kirk. Uh, I can't remember the addresses.
It's between Old Main and two thirty-one.
Okay.
There's just two lights there and they're right in the center of the street.
Right, they're, they're right there where the intersection is of the Sunset Drive and, and other street.
Yeah, we need one up a little bit and then one down towards two thirty-one.
Yes.
It's pretty dark.
Probably need some breeze trans along there, don't we? I mean, all right, um, I'll, I'll have, um, all right, we'll have KU come in and put two more lights in there. We need a motion though to that effect.
I'll make the motion.
Bo made a motion?
I'll second.
Tony, second.
All right, uh, any discussion regarding this? Motion is to add two streetlights on Kirk Street between Old Main and two thirty-one. Uh, if you're in favor of that, uh, the uplifted hand?
Thank you.
That's five.
All right, opposed?
Nope, maybe not. Everybody was opposed.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anything else?
Get well.
I think that's a, that's a general consensus, yes. Please get well, Mayor.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much. I'm sorry I wasn't there to see the deer in the headlights look with the new members when they were handling over the audit report, so.
I thought he done a really good job, went through it quick. I was, I was looking for a long presentation there, but he done really good.
No, he's, he's pretty short, but just to understand what he's talking about, so thanks.
Right.
All right, if there's nothing else, I entertain a motion. We adjourn.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Tony? David?
Any discussion? All in favor of lifted hand?
That's everyone.
All right, motion carried. Thank you all so much. Sorry it had to be this way.
Well, get the pila matter.
Look forward to next one. Thank you.
Bye, George.